It is six thirty. I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Wednesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six thirty P. M. Would you all please rise and pay respects to the flag?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noting of the roll.
Noted. There is a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Before we move on, I would like to move to approve the agenda with the following changes. I'd like to add on the agenda tonight amend item fourteen G under new business to add the micro metro fiber net LLC right-of-way telecommunications permit and to add a second item under the closed session personnel matter.
I'll make a motion to approve that agenda as amended.
You have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Any questions? Yes, sir.
There's a double motion on the motion.
Oh, well, I just recognized one.
Okay. All right. Just for the record.
That fair, Susan? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. And I'd like to remind everybody to speak into the mics. I hear some of us, some of us don't. I know our AV people appreciate that. Item five of approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Shapiro. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item six, public comment on items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on items that aren't on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Board. I'm C. J. Carocchio, Communications and Grants Manager. I just wanted to report that as of August seventh, two hundred and fifty-two people are now ready to spring into action should they encounter someone who's experiencing a cardiac arrest or choking in their home or a public space. Last week, the Oxford Fire Department held the last of twenty-four free monthly CPR classes that began in September of twenty-three. Of the two hundred and fifty-two people received free training, the youngest was nine years old and the oldest was eighty-five years old. And of those two hundred and fifty-two people, ninety-five were older adults.
Adults ranging from fifty-six to eighty-five years old. That's important for two reasons because people age sixty and older are about fifty percent less likely to be trained in CPR than adults under the age of forty-nine, and the risk for sudden cardiac arrest goes up as age increases. And of those two hundred and fifty-two people, one hundred and seventy-two were residents of Oxford Township or Village. The rest of the students were from seventeen other communities in Oakland, La Pire, McComb, Genesee, Sinclair, and Livingston Counties. The twenty-four-month program was made possible by a twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-five-dollar grant from the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan and a sixteen hundred dollar donation from the Caldian Community Foundation. Captain Kevin Snell, the department's EMS coordinator, and I worked together to secure this grant, and I would say definitely paid off because we have two hundred and fifty-two people who now have the knowledge and skills to save a life, and you can't put a price on that. I want to thank the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan and the Caldian Community Foundation for their generosity. I want to thank Captain Snell, along with the other CPR instructors, Lewis Marshall, Christina Shevki, Joanne Edmonds, Sarah Schultz, and Carrie Kilgore for all their hard work and excellent teaching skills. And last but certainly not least, I want to thank every single person who took the time to attend one of those free classes. You bettered yourself, you bettered your community, and you prepared yourself to become a beacon of hope to someone in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Have all other members come on up.
Hey, my name's Aaron Cummins. We've emailed a little bit. So I just wanted to come and talk about the stairs at Brad Dewey. So it's, some of you might know about it. The EMTs know about it. Jack knows all about it. The residents there are getting pretty frustrated with what we feel like is kind of a constant bureaucratic loop where RCOC is saying the township is responsible, the township is saying RCOC is responsible. It sounds like there was a meeting a couple of weeks ago. I think the fire chief was there. And everybody seems like they're on board with knowing that something needs to be done, but nobody wants to take ownership of it. So kind of where the neighborhood's at right now, I'm not an official representative, but I'm the only one that showed up tonight. So we just kind of want to know if the township is ready to move the ball down the field a little bit, if we could open it up for bids, if we could even see if this is within the realm of possibility, or if it's just completely on us. RCOC has said that we could talk to them about opening up a permit, but because it's, it just, it, with it being on the water, it's going to require all kinds of engineering studies and this and that. And we're just trying to figure out where the township is at to get a firm answer and figure out where we go from here. So that's about it.
Thank you, Aaron.
All right. Thanks.
Any other members of the public have anything they'd like to say? Seeing none, I'll move on to Board of Trustees comments. I'm going to go first tonight because Aaron's still in the room. I want to talk about this Brad Dewey thing. The township is working vehemently with the road commission, our attorneys, our engineers. We're working strongly on it. We understand the necessity of working with the community to solve a problem that's there. That's all I can give you at this time. We're working on it. Other than that, I have nothing else. We'll start with Trustee Colvin.
Nothing at this time.
Right. Yes, a few items for the public. If you're not aware, there'll be a school election for Oxford Schools on November fourth, and there's two proposals on the ballot for that. The first one is an operating measure replacement proposal. It basically affects the non-homestead taxable units, and they're looking to do a ten-year millage for point six eight four five mills, and that would be levied on the two thousand and twenty-five tax bill. The second one is a building in-site sinking fund proposal. That one is a one-mill levy across Oxford Township and the village for a period of ten years from two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and thirty-four. So that's coming up on the ballot. So if you're an absent voter, you can, you're going to get mailed a ballot automatically if you're on the automatic ballot list. If you're an absent voter with none on there and you want a ballot, you need to contact us. We'll have all precincts available. And then the other one is Lake Orion Schools is having a bond election as well. Theirs is going to be a two hundred and seventy-two million twenty-year bond, up to, and their first year levy on that is one point three five mills if that passes. For Oxford Township, that only affects precinct five, which is the southern part of the township. So we redistrict the township, so it just has the Lake Orion Schools. The next thing that I have is for the board members, I have a, an education day on the twenty-seventh of August. It's all day in Mount Pleasant, and we have a budget workshop meeting, so I may be late depending on when I can get here. It gets out at four-thirty, so it's a two-hour drive, and we start at six-thirty. So with that, just one other thing on the twenty-eighth, we have a clerk's luncheon, so the clerk's department will be shut down for approximately four hours while we tend that to get our education and updates for that. So other than that, that's my comments right now.
Thank you. Treasurer Ferrari?
Based on Clerk Wright's comments, I'm wondering if Supervisor Curtis could maybe move that meeting to seven-thirty. That's all my comments.
No, you don't need to. No.
Okay. Trustee Wagner?
No comments at this time.
Trustee Shapiro?
I would just say it's exciting to see how they're going to be swearing in two new members of the fire department and growing our city and making us stronger. So I thank all of the first responders for their service.
And Trustee Charles?
I have two board points. One on no has, which we had not too long ago. There's, for the board to know this, there's twenty-one commu- community, sorry, communities that participate in no has. We're one of the few that provide this at no cost to township residents. The past one, which we had at Kensington Church, where eight hundred and twenty-seven cars come through. Over twenty-five percent were from Oxford, by the way, which is nice. Previously, as you know, we had one at Oxford Middle School. We had over a thousand cars come through that time. So pretty nice to see. The next one's going to be the Pontiac Service Center in September, and I'll send a note out about that later on. Second board point, DDA. I distributed some spreadsheets earlier so everyone knows. Township contributes two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars to the Oxford Downtown Development Authority, which represents forty-six point two percent of the total DDA budget. Here's a constant for the DDA. The trial is not operating right now. I see Catherine smiling down there. This time, it's for a different reason. There's been some insurance issues with notice, so that's why it's not operating currently. And that's it.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. Item number eight, presentation. C. J. Carocchio. We have a resolution for Oakland County Sheriff's Office Deputy Brad Ostrander. Brad here. You can come up, Bradley. You're out of uniform, by the way.
Board members, how you doing?
Nice.
In honor of Deputy Ostrander's retirement, I prepared a resolution for you guys to vote on. Whereas Deputy Brad Ostrander has served and protected the people of Oxford and Oakland County as a law enforcement professional for more than three decades. And whereas Deputy Ostrander began his journey as a reserve officer for the Waterford Police Department in nineteen eighty-eight and a part-time officer for the Lake Angeles Police Department in nineteen ninety-two. And whereas Deputy Ostrander worked for the former Oxford Police Department, a joint Township Village Agency, from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand as a patrol officer, detective, and sergeant. And whereas Deputy Ostrander joined the Oakland County Sheriff's Office in two thousand and served with the agency until his retirement in August two thousand and twenty-five. And whereas Deputy Ostrander was assigned to the Oakland County Sheriff Oxford Township Substation from two thousand to two thousand and two, and again from two thousand and five until his retirement. And whereas Deputy Ostrander is the longest-serving substation deputy for Oxford Township. And whereas Deputy Ostrander was honored by the American Legion Walter Frazier Post one oh eight as the most outstanding police officer of the year in two thousand and fourteen. And whereas Deputy Ostrander is well-known and respected by colleagues and citizens for his excellent leadership skills, cooperative spirit, consummate professionalism, solid work ethic, impeccable integrity, selflessness, calm and respectful manner, firm demeanor, and unwavering dedication to keeping the peace, protecting the innocent, and apprehending lawbreakers. And whereas Deputy Ostrander volunteered to work at countless community events over the years, including Tough Mudder, lacrosse tournaments, Seymour Celebration, parades, and others. And whereas Deputy Ostrander has received numerous citations from the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, including the Disaster Bar, Sheriff's Special Commendation Citation, Equivalency Bar Citation, Professional Excellence Unit Citation, and the Sheriff's Distinguished Unit Citation. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Charter Township Board of, Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees wishes to express its heartfelt gratitude and deepest appreciation to Deputy Ostrander for everything he's done to keep us all safe and make our community a pleasant place to live, work, and play. We hope you enjoy your well-deserved retirement. You will be missed. We salute you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, thank you for all you do. I see some familiar faces that have been around a long time. Jack Curtis, amazing supervisor, involved, comes down, sees us, great friend. Appreciate all you do. Next would be my wife, Kathy. I can't do that without her. All through the years, next week's our anniversary, thirty-three years. So, and appreciate her. And my kids aren't local, so they would like to be here, but I couldn't do it without support of the kids and growing up and working twenty years of midnights and waiting for me to get home for opening up their gifts for Christmas and not complaining one bit. So, and it's nice to see everybody from the fire department, and it's, everybody works together here so well. I don't know if other communities are like that, but it's very important. Scenes we go to are hectic, and it's great to have people that all work together. And our command staff, Lieutenant Patterson, has been my boss for a long time, and we've seen a lot. And we're super happy Sergeant Meza comes in that we've worked with, and we've had a lot of fun, too. But that really helps when you have your township supervisor and board that are supportive, and everybody gets along, and there's no drama in this substation whatsoever. And that's what keeps me here. I started out in nineteen ninety-three by Jack Lewy. He gave me my start. And I knew I wanted to work in this community, and we got absorbed in two thousand. I did some time in Addison for bump rights, and when I could get back here, I got back here and stayed here. I could have a choice to go to Oak, from South Lion all the way around the Rochester Hills, but I chose to stay here because I just enjoyed watching the community grow and the people grow. And it's pretty strange. This is it. But I appreciate all of you, everybody from the community. I appreciate, we care about you. And yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute, oh, we got a.
I'll make that motion on the resolution. C. J., write.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Shapiro. Any questions?
Roll call. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute recess so we can get some pictures with the gentlemen from the Sheriff's Department, get them back to work. And then we'll come back in and move into some other business. So five minutes, some pictures?
Yes.
Okay, call the meeting back to order. We'll move on. Number nine, first readings. Item A, zoning ordinance sixty-seven A dot zero four three, text amendments to update Article eleven, private roads. Board members, we have the pleasure of having M squared, no, M, yeah.
Megan Masson Minock, so three Ms or M cubed.
Three M, M cubed.
From Carlo Wartman Associates, where you're planning consultants. Over the past year, our township staff's been challenged in various road issues in the community relating to access, issuance of permits and lot splits. These are really uncommon circumstances, but they do happen. And when they do, they could prohibit the reasonable use of property in the township and allow for prolonged life of non-conforming, of non-conforming roads. So township's legal counsel had asked the ORC to look at this, the Ordinance Review Committee. They went through their process and brought it to Planning Commission, and that's the reason for the number, for the amendments before you tonight. And essentially, what that does is it says if there's a gap kind of in the non-conforming road or somebody want, is on a non-conforming road, and they want to build something, that there can be a connection that is less than the minimum width of the road that's prescribed, as long as it matches what's on either side. And then the rest of them are really technical things where it's, whether it's a registered civil engineer instead of a licensed civil engineer or vice versa. And be happy to answer any questions that I could on the zoning and planning side. And of course, you have your counsel here, too, who could answer any legal questions.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions?
I, I move to approve the first reading of the amendments to Article eleven, the Township zoning ordinance, and hereby set the second reading for October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari. I have a second by Trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item nine B, zoning ordinance sixty-seven A dot zero four four, text amendments to Article three, district regulations for lots zoned I one, light industrial, and I two, general industrial.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. What's before you tonight is to adjust the setbacks in your industrial districts, specifically I one and I two. The reason this was taken up is after a review of the industrial lots in the township, it, it was observed that many of the properties are on small lots or oddly shaped lots. And what that does is it can present challenges to development and redevelopment of sites. And it had conversations at, the planning consultants and township staff had had conversations with potential applicants at the counter about that. And this was one of the reasons that it was brought to the Ordinance Review Committee. They looked at it and did an analysis, went, went to the Planning Commission, and it was recommended to you. A couple of things that I want to note as you're looking at this is, number one, landscaping requirements are not proposed to change. So even though the setbacks might be a little bit smaller, they still have to do the required landscaping. They still have the same parking requirements. They still have the same driveway requirements. However, if an industrial lot would abut in the rear, would abut a residentially zoned property, then the current setbacks of fifty and seventy-five feet for I one and I two respectively would kick in. So in that case, there wouldn't be any, you're, we're not letting the buildings get any closer to a residentially zoned property. Also, the side yard setbacks are not due to change. There's some of those. The only thing that, where it might possibly affect a residential property is that there, that the setbacks are proposed to be increased by ten feet. So the building could get ten feet closer to the road. Again, from a residential property that's across the road, you would have the road, the landscaping, and usually the parking and driveway. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, if you had any.
Board members, any questions?
I'll make a motion to set the second reading. No, it's the first one, right?
First one.
I'm the wrong one.
Set a second reading.
Oh, to set the second reading for the proposed text amendments, zoning ordinance sixty-seven eight point zero four four, for the Charter Township Oxford Board of Trustees meeting September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari. I have a second by Trustee Wagner. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Board members, item ten A, zoning ordinance sixty-seven A dot zero three nine, revisions to section sixteen point eight, performance guarantees. Hello, Attorney Allen.
Hello, Mr. Supervisor. I, I believe in that motion you only set second reading. I don't think first reading was approved. So the board may also want to just either clarify that motion or pass a motion to approve first reading. I'm looking at Susan because she catches everything. So she's nodding her head, so I know I'm on the right track.
So our first motion for I one lots needs to be redone?
You can redo it, or you can simply pass a motion to set, to approve the first reading. You've already passed the motion to approve the second reading, or I'm sorry, to set the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading for the proposed text amendments, zoning ordinance sixty-seven eight point zero four four, for the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees meeting.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin. Any questions? Clerk Wright?
There's no date set on that.
Is that the date of the first motion?
Which was it? Oh, for the first one, okay.
Question answered. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Now we can do ten A, performance guarantees?
Yes.
Thank you. Zoning ordinance sixty-seven A dot zero three nine, revisions to section sixteen point eight, performance guarantees.
Do you want me to speak first?
Sure.
Good evening, Board. This one has been a while in progress. This came to me to look at administratively, to compare performance guarantee ordinance to other municipalities and see if we were perhaps being a little overzealous in our regulation. We had received some complaints from developers that perhaps our ordinance was more stringent than other municipalities. Went through it, did an analysis, and did find that there could be a relaxation in some areas, so made a general recommendation to the Planning Commission. The first big issue was currently the township requires developers to post a hundred percent of the cost of the improvements to the development. That's been reduced to fifty percent, which is more in line with what other municipalities have for their standards. And then the second one was, the second big issue was whether the township wanted to allow performance bonds as well as letters of credit and cash for their performance guarantees. The township previously has not allowed performance bonds, and so that went to Planning Commission for a recommendation. Planning Commission accepted those recommendations, came to this board for first reading. That was approved. Now it's before you for second reading.
Any questions? Hearing none.
I move to approve the second reading of the amendments to section sixteen point eight, performance guarantees of the Township zoning ordinance, and authorize the Township clerk to know the same in accordance with state law.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Wagner. Again, any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item eleven, fire department. Chief, you have some business this evening?
Yes, we do. First of all, we have two members to swear in, which last month, I, we had hoped to get him on the agenda last month, but because of waiting on results of backgrounds and things like that, we were delayed. And that was supposed to be the last open spot. But sadly, we lost another member. He left the fire, the fire service altogether because he passed the bar exam, and he is now going to be practicing law. That's Dan Deary. He has left the department. So I see the attorneys shaking their heads. So that tells me maybe, whatever, right? His own choice, right? But the two candidates that I have tonight to be sworn in, again, are both candidates that we brought up through our internal system that, again, was a benefit of the memo of understanding that we signed with the union to work together to bring in and cultivate from within our own candidates of our part-time paid-on-call members. And so, again, another positive result of that. So at this time, I'd like to ask Andrew Horton and Lucas Spector to join me at the podium.
You're going to do them one at a time?
We're going to do them one at a time, yes. This is, this is Andrew. Lucas, over here. Come on over here, Lucas. Andrew grew up in Lake Orion, graduated from Lake Orion High School. We try not to hold that against him, but he's here now with us and doing a great job. Lucas, also an Orion kid, but he is the son of Captain Kirk Spector of our department. So it's a nice legacy to see coming up. So at this time, I'd like to ask Andrew, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Andrew Horton.
Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
Depose and say that I will support.
Depose and say that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the charter and ordinances of the Charter Township of Oxford.
And the charter and ordinances of the Charter Township of Oxford.
I will recognize the badge of my office.
I will recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
I will honor and respect the mission.
I will honor and respect the mission.
Values.
Values.
Goals.
Goals.
And policies of the Oxford Fire Department.
And policies of the Oxford Fire Department.
I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration. An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the Charter Township of Oxford. Of the affairs of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Of the affairs of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Free from partisan control.
Free from partisan control.
And I will fulfill the responsibilities.
And I will fulfill the responsibilities.
Of Oxford Fire Department firefighter paramedic.
Of Oxford Fire Department firefighter paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
And now Lucas. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Lucas Spector.
Being first duly sworn.
Be first duly sworn.
Depose and say that I will support.
Depose and say I support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the charter and ordinances of the Charter Township of Oxford.
The charter ordinances of the Charter Township of Oxford.
I will recognize the badge of my office.
I recognize the badge of my office.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
I will honor and respect the mission.
I will honor and respect the mission.
Values.
Values.
Goals.
Goals.
And policies of the Oxford Fire Department.
And the policies of the Oxford Fire Department.
I will endeavor to secure.
I will endeavor to secure.
And maintain.
And maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Affairs of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Free from partisan control.
Free from partisan control.
And I will fulfill the responsibilities of Oxford Fire Department firefighter paramedic.
And I will fulfill the responsibilities of the Oxford Fire Department firefighter paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome. What's that? Oh. You wanna get a picture with the, I'd like to get a picture with the supervisor and, yeah. Yeah, did you wanna just do the five-minute thing real, for this way, then we can get out of everybody's way?
Yes, we could take a five-minute break and take some pictures.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
I'd have, I would have had to have cue cards.
Yeah, I try my best here.
I know.
I screwed up my way.
We rewrote it.
Just like that, and you guys look at us, kinda come in together closer. There you go. Big smiles. Okay? And now we'll swap out. Now you do the same thing he did. Big smiles. There you go, good.
Wait your turn.
All right, one more? All right, wanna get you all together? You wanna jump in there now? Get on each other's side. There you go. Big smiles. Okay?
About to miss me to get you to see.
All right, who wants to, we're all done in here? Okay, there we go. That'll work. Actually, yeah. That'll work. Big smiles, guys. Get in a little closer. There you go. Big smiles, everybody. Okay?
Get the best position right next to you.
Okay. All right, there you go. All right, get ready, ready? Big smiles. Okay?
Right here, right at the lens. Kurt, with you, one, two, with me. Kurt, over here. Kurt!
Welcome, gentlemen.
So you were a wealth manager. Oh, wow. I've had my series advertised. Yeah, I mean, I. It's horrible.
Oh, boy, we had a full agenda. Sorry. No, he's next, coming up after the unfinished business. I'll call this meeting back into session. We've completed number eleven with the fire department. Number twelve, the shop engineering report, board members. Board members is in your packet. If there are any questions, I'll try and address them at this time. Jim is attending an eightieth birthday party for his father. He's gonna probably be here a little later tonight. Any questions? Hearing none. Item thirteen, unfinished business. Thirteen A job descriptions, trustee Colvin.
Okay, board, the personnel committee was tasked with looking at the job descriptions. They had not been updated for township employees in quite some time. So we reviewed them. We actually had all the people that were actually doing the jobs review them themselves, so they could add in anything they were actually doing. At MTA, at the MTA conference this year, it was recommended that we have two separate job descriptions for deputies of full-time elected officials. The reason for this is the deputy serves at the will of the full-time elected official. So should, say Treasurer Ferrari win the lottery and he's off, he resigns and he's off in the beach, as soon as we accept his resignation, the deputy clerk has to go. So in order to maintain township offices and ensure that our residents are served, I mean, there would be two-thirds of the treasurer's office gone. So we have separated out the deputy from the other roles that the deputy performs and created an executive assistant and a deputy role. The deputy role is now only the statutory definition, and the executive assistant role is defined as all the other things that assistant does for the treasurer's office. Same with the clerk. The deputy supervisor already has these titles separated, so that's what we did. Questions?
Any questions? Yes, trustee Charles.
So just to clarify, of course, you're wrapping them in a one definition. I mean, there are two separate ones, but it's, what would someone use as a definition for the job responsibilities? Both? One?
We have two separate positions.
Right.
So one person will fulfill two separate positions. The deputy's role is just taken from the Michigan codified laws. It says it's defined there. And that is the only description for that role now. And the other description has everything that the person actually does day-to-day. Because the deputy really is, only has to be, I think, eighteen years old and willing to step in. I mean, that's really the only definition for their job.
Okay. Any other questions? Look for a motion.
Save my voice.
Okay, I move that following, the following updated job descriptions be approved effective August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Administrative and executive assistant OCSO substation, administrative assistant to the building department, administrative assistant to the township clerk, administrative assistant to the township treasurer, building official, communications and grants manager, deputy clerk, executive assistant to the township clerk, deputy supervisor, executive assistant to the township supervisor, deputy treasurer, executive assistant to the township treasurer, ordinance enforcement officer, planning and zoning executive assistant. I further move that the positions of deputy clerk and executive assistant to the clerk be split into two separate job descriptions and responsibilities, and that deputy clerk Susan McCulloch be given the additional job title of executive assistant to the township clerk. I further move that the position of deputy treasurer and executive assistant to the deputy treasurer be split into two separate job descriptions and responsibilities, and that deputy treasurer Tracy Deveraux be given the additional job title of executive assistant to the township treasurer.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Colvin. I have a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, item thirteen B, twenty twenty-five Oxford Charter Township master plan. It's assigned to David Wagner, trustee Wagner. But planner Menesek is here, and we can address any questions through me to either one of the folks. Go ahead.
I want to first start out by saying thank you. This has been a two-year process. I know that many of us started off on it in, over at the Parks and Rec at a plan-to-plan meeting where we were talking about what this plan should look like, and here we are at the end. So I want to thank everybody who contributed, especially those in the planning commission and those who were on the steering committee. That really built upon, what's before you today, really built upon a foundation of your previous plans. A lot of what the changes that were made were merely putting things in different order, updating the document to look like a document from the twenty twenties, and that's gonna look great when it's posted on your website. But also looking to the future and what areas especially that are coming off of anticipating the next ten years to no longer be gravel, actively mined, what those would look like. And your planning commission worked really hard on those plans, and I think that this puts you in a great place looking forward. We had, the planning commission recommended this to the township board last month with two small changes, which have been made, making sure M twenty-four is properly named. And then also that piece of property that's a cemetery was changed to public institutional on the future land use map. Also, I'm aware that we need one more changes to make sure that trustee Shapiro is listed in the board of trustees. And so we apologize for that not making into this draft. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the process or any questions you have about the plan itself.
Are there any questions on the Oxford Township master plan? Hearing none.
Okay, I'll make a motion in consideration of the recommendation from the planning commission and information provided by staff and CWA, the board of trustees, moves to adopt the Oxford Township master plan twenty twenty-five in accordance with P A thirty-three of two thousand and eight as amended, subject to the following modifications, and that's the addition of trustee Shapiro.
I'll second that. Go ahead.
I have a motion by trustee Wagner, and I have a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Any questions? Clerk Wright.
In the packet, there's a resolution. There's no mention in the motion to the resolution. I just want to confirm that this motion will approve that resolution, put in our books.
Yes, it will. Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
All right, Bill, you're here. Fourteen A cemetery wall restoration bid recommendation. Board members, a couple of years ago, the cemetery committee went out and found a lot of cemetery walls that were falling apart, caving in, and we were afraid it was gonna compromise some of the graves. Tonight with us is Bill Couch from Strictly Stone, who has prepared the first twelve walls. Was it twelve?
Twelve or thirteen.
Yeah, the first twelve were completed. A bid was sent out for the second set of twelve walls. Bill's company, Strictly Stone, was the low bidder in the process of bidding, which went out through mitten. And the bid of a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred dollars tonight to repair twelve walls, as stated in your packet, to each one of those walls.
I didn't like that, low bidder. He's down here laughing at me.
I'm laughing with you.
That's okay. I'm happy. I did it honestly.
I move to prove the.
The right bidder.
There you go, the right bidder. I move to prove the bid from Strictly Stone and Sons, amount of a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred, entered into a cemetery retaining wall replacement agreement for the repair and restoration of twelve walls located in the Oxford Cemetery Eastern Division and Western Division, contingent on receipt of an insurance certificate, naming the Charter Township of Oxford as additional insured. Further, supervisor Jack Curtis is authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford. This hundred and four thousand, seven hundred amount to be expensed as cemetery maintenance fund account two oh nine, two seven six, nine three five point zero zero zero, restoration.
I'll second the motion. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Clerk Wright. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Just questions from Mr. Couch. You indicated it'd take you six to eight weeks to complete these walls.
Probably more like six, I'm thinking.
Six weeks?
Yeah.
Would you have any other work that would prohibit you from completing?
No, I'll put this first.
First off?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last thing is to sign the agreement. Are you gonna come to Jack's office tomorrow to sign this?
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. And then the mausoleum too, right?
Oh, that's next.
Next up. Okay, all right.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Yep.
Roll call.
Let's go with Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, board members, item fourteen B and fourteen C are kind of the same, but we're gonna go through B first. The cemetery committee noticed the roof on the mausoleum needs minimal repair. Needs a little love after fourteen years. So we went out to Royal Roofing and asked them, you know, give us an opinion of what this would cost to do. We can bid it out and have everybody look at the cost. He looked at it and said, no, you only need this much, so we can do it. However, we're not gonna do that until you fix the gutters. I said, what's wrong with the gutters? If you could pull it up, how many years ago was it? Fourteen, fifteen?
Two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen, the gutters were stolen off the mausoleum.
I just can't believe it.
Yeah, the gutters were copper, and they were all stolen, and no gutters have been put back up. So I asked Royal Roofing, I said, well, who does gutters? He said, well, we do downspouts. However, before you do a downspout and before you do the roof, you have a bigger problem. I said, what's the bigger problem? The limestone on the top of the mausoleum, all the way around, has come separated from the limestone base. And sans the gutters, the absence of the gutters, if you look at the picture, on the right-hand side, you'll see a black stripe running down.
Yeah.
That's where the water's been going down, getting behind the tuck pointing of the mortar and busting it out. So before you put the gutters up, you gotta fix the top plate and the gutters. So with the bid for the restoration of the walls, I asked Mr. Couch if he could tuck point and secure the limestone on the mausoleum. and secure the limestone on the mausoleum. Strictly Stone submitted a bid to do that. So we're going to address that next, but we have a nine thousand seven hundred dollar repair to the roof, and before that can be done, the limestone has to be fixed. Then before the limestone can be tuckpoint, or the gutters can be stalled, we have to tuckpoint all of that separation of the limestone on the walls. So what I'm asking tonight is approval to do the downspouts and the roof repairs. If done separately, they would have done-
My price includes pretty much doing the whole shell of the building. I'm going to take all the joints out and replace all of them.
Okay, we're going to do that next, Bill.
Yeah.
This right now is to approve the nine thousand seven hundred dollars for the repair of the roof and the seven thousand eight hundred dollars for the gutters to be installed. But before those gutters can be installed, fourteen C is why Bill is here tonight. We asked him, these repairs need to be done now. The stone has to be fixed before the roof gets fixed. The roof has to get fixed. So in order to put this out to bid, we're out at forty-five days. Since Bill was the lowest bidder of the cemetery restoration walls, we asked Strictly Stone if they could do tuckpointing and securing the limestone on top. So Board members, fourteen B is the roof and downspout repairs.
There's no motion for that, am I correct?
Both projects are in compliance with the procurement policy to allow for administrative approval. However, fourteen C, we did not send out to bid because of the emergency need of this repairs, and since Bill was the lowest bidder, we asked him to give us a quote for securing the limestone on the roof and doing all the tuckpoint on all four corners of the building. That's fourteen C, which needs approval of this board to deviate from the quoting procurement policy to get this done. Now, I want to also tell you that before any of this work could be done, we had to have two large bald-faced hornet nests removed and about six hornet nests in the cracks of this mausoleum walls removed. Totally unsafe to fix that. So this progression has to be done, whether permitting. Mr. Couch's company said he can get this done. When would you start on this?
Probably Monday.
Monday.
He said he wanted it quick.
So B's okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I move to waive the requirements of procurement policy and approve the August fourth, twenty twenty-five email, quote a price of seventeen thousand dollars from Strictly Stone and Sons, to regrout all exterior joints of the mausoleum, repair the loose blocks along the top of the mausoleum. The seventeen thousand dollars amount to be expensed as Cemetery Maintenance Fund Account 209-276-935.000, restoration.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari. I have a second by Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Thank you for coming tonight, Bill.
Want to stop in tomorrow?
Yes.
Any certain time? After lunch?
Eight oh one.
Eight oh one is good.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock is okay.
Nice meeting you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate it.
Board members, thank you very much. This is, this project is scaring me because we've been over there so much that the hornets were, I mean, violent.
Are they friends with them?
No, I didn't make any friends with them. I've made buddies. I called Will Thompson. Item fourteen D, fencing of Oxford Cemeteries. Board members, the Cemetery Committee visited all three cemeteries and examined the condition of the existing fencing and determined if the fencing needs to be installed or repaired. The Cemetery Committee is recommending fencing the entire boundary of the Oxford Cemetery Second Edition, Third Edition, and the additional approximate vacant one acre of cemetery property, along with a small portion of the north property line of the Oxford Cemetery Eastern Division. There's also small repair to the fencing in the North Oxford Cemetery. It's an estimated that twenty-three hundred feet of fencing proposed for installation and repair. Due to the estimated cost, we will need to bid.
I move to authorize a request for proposal for cemetery fencing installation and fencing repairs packet, be posted on the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network. All proposals received will be provided to the Oxford Township Cemetery Committee for a recommendation and for possible approval at a future Oxford Township Board Trustees meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Colvin. I do want to make one point. We are not fencing this to clear cut for any roadways. We are not cutting down mature trees to put the fence on directly. We'll work around neighbors who have trees that block views. We will not intrude into neighbors' yards and destroy their privacy. We are fencing the subdivision, or fencing these cemeteries strictly as a precautionary, identifying where these are and keeping people from dumping in them, keeping people from trespassing on them after hours of the cemetery. Are there any questions?
Sorry, put my thing on. So when we do some removal of vegetation, whatnot, what's the rule? Again, I think we're talking about if a tree is right in the middle of a property line, what's the general?
We don't want to cut any good trees down. That's not our intent. We will fence up to it and fence behind it. Twenty years from now, if the tree's dead, they'll take the fence, or the tree down and put a section of fence in. We have a resident who planted twelve arborvitae trees. If we put that fence up to those arborvitae's, they're just going to grow through it. So we're going to come back off of it a little bit. We are not looking to strip vegetation to build a roadway or any of that. Yes, Trustee Wagner.
So are there any other areas where homeowners have extended their landscaping onto cemetery property that you're going to have to address? You mentioned these trees. Are there any other places?
We just did not want to ruin the view of everybody else from putting a fence up around the cemetery.
How tall is this fence going to be?
Four foot.
Four feet? Where are you lying?
Okay, I looked for a motion.
Motion's on the floor.
Oh, okay, call or roll?
All right. Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Fourteen D is handled. Fourteen E, Mobile Devices Policy, Trustee Colvin.
Okay, for the Personnel Committee was asked to review the cell phone policy, and so we did. We came up with a mobile device and cell phone policy in order to ensure township data is protected. It was recommended by MTA, but also, and also by outside counsel, that anybody that accesses township information, township systems on a mobile device, have that device be a township device, and they should not be using their personal devices. So based on that, we wrote a policy that would prohibit employees from accessing township information on their personal devices and authorize the township to purchase mobile devices for any employee that needs to access township information. So based on that, I move to approve the mobile device, cell phone policy, and authorize Supervisor Curtis to procure mobile devices for any township employee that needs to access township systems and direct it, the township mobile device be used to access any township systems and to conduct all township business.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Colvin, a second by Trustee Shapiro. Are there any questions? Trustee Charles.
Said any township employee. Can you put some specificity to that?
Any township employee that is, needs to access township systems.
Such as?
Device. Well, it could be the deputy supervisor. I believe she uses things like the SNA and other township systems on a mobile device.
Would you, not to be too picky about it, because I mean, I like the policy, but is there some, like, list of folks that might be, this might be applicable to?
Any, any, I would say any full-time township employee that needs to access it. And we should, I mean, it should be a need to access the township systems. It shouldn't just be somebody that wants to.
And who would identify what need?
I would identify the need for our department. Number one, the Communications and Grants Manager has his own phone. However, the deputy supervisor, when I'm driving around here talking to somebody and Danielle texts me, she's using her phone.
I get that, yeah.
I would say that Danielle needs one.
So potentially, we would say each department would then identify these people as opposed to anyone.
Yes.
That's why I say maybe some specificity. So, I mean, I agree with the policy, I just think it could be a little bit, a little bit tighter as far as how it's applied.
Anybody that accesses the cell or the databases in this township after hours. My phone goes off seven days a week, day or night, and I have to go in to look at something, my emails, and find out somebody's address, and make a call to WRC or to the fire chief and talk about something. You know, that would be a person that should have one.
But again, my thought would be is can we say each department chairperson would then select it as part of this, this thing here? Because it's a little bit too nebulous.
Yeah. The determination of the-
That self, self, just, you know, generally speaking, as you would, as you have it, I mean, you have a manager who manages people. The manager decides who needs phone.
Right.
I mean, that's just how you manage an office or manage whatever you're managing.
So can we add that?
Well, that's, why would you need that? It's just how you manage.
She just said so.
If I, yeah, you know, if Joe doesn't approve, say Sarah, to have a cell phone, she would just, I want one.
So you're saying each department chairperson?
Yeah.
But that's not in this resolution then?
But isn't that, like, understood though? Again, I mean, it's how you manage your business.
Not according to the motion. What Rod is saying is the motion says, I go in there and get it, I want a cell phone. That motion allows that person to get one.
No.
No, it's too big.
Supervisor Curtis.
But it doesn't say that. It just says in the motion.
See me, that's the stopgap.
It says authorize Supervisor Curtis to procure mobile devices.
Okay.
He has the final say.
He is the only say.
Boy, that power just makes it so good.
The cell phone king.
Does that clarify it?
Well, it just says that you are the person then, and not the department chairperson.
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call.
All right, let's go with Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
No.
Let's go with Treasurer Ferrari.
No.
Let's go with Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Let's go with Clerk Wright. I will say yes.
Don't be so enthusiastic.
Supervisor Curtis.
No.
If you do that, it's going to hurt you the most.
Motion carries. Item fourteen F, Oxford Addison Youth Assistance Request for Contribution, Trustee Charles.
Okay, folks, Oxford Addison Youth Assistance has done a great job on the community. There's a number of communities or organizations that say that participate, Oxford Township, Oxford Village, Addison Township, Leonard Village, and the Oxford Community School System. Oxford Township, of the current financial contributions, we contribute fifty-five percent of the financial contributions. There's also in-kind contributions, but of the money, we are contributing fifty-five percent of the total budget. So I'm going to propose here that we continue that. There's a possibility at some point in time that we might want to increase what we've done pending some verification of increasing costs that get put upon the youth assistance by the court system. So at that point, I'm going to read the resolution here. I move to allocate twelve thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and forty-seven cents in the general funds to Oxford Addison Youth Assistance. This twelve thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and forty-seven cents amount is to be expensed in the general fund account 101-695-881.002.
Second. I have a motion by Trustee Charles and a second by Trustee Wagner. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, item fourteen G, which we had added tonight, and it is a time matter. Board members, back a few months ago, Metro FiberNet came to our board meeting and put a presentation about putting fiber optics in the township of Oxford. The Metro Act of 2002 relates to paying our township about fifteen thousand dollars to allow the right-of-ways to be accessed by fiber optic and/or media to run cable through. None of this cable is done on private property. If it is, they have to have the property owner's consent, which we're not worried about, they would be feeding it to a private home. But through the LARA process of Metro FiberNet working in the right-of-way telecommunications, they have to have us approve it. And the time essence here is, right now Auburn Hills has approved it, Orion has approved it, and they're moving to Rochester Hills, and we have to sign allowing them to pay us five hundred dollars for them to work in the Road Commission of Oakland County right-of-way or the MDOT right-of-way to install this fiber. It is only an act, a regulation of the LARA, the licensing and regulation of Michigan, them to follow this step through. Because we opted in in 2002, we have to take this step, and I have to sign the document that says, well, where are you coming? That's all it does.
I move to approve the right-of-way telecommunications permit between Metro FiberNet LLC and the Charter Township of Oxford. I further authorize Supervisor Jack Curtis to sign the document on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Item fifteen, items removed from the consent agenda. We had none. Item sixteen, public comment. Again, this three minutes for any members of the public to come up and address with the board anything they have to say. Seeing none. Item seventeen, Board of Trustees comments. If you have comments, we'll start with Trustee Charles.
Well, I have something here that Supervisor Curtis should be interested in, maybe Catherine Colvin is chairperson of the Compensation Committee. I found some notes from the very first Township Board meeting of April eighteen thirty-seven. So something that I'm going to consider here, but-
Did you take those minutes?
Yes, yes. I'm on the Compensation Committee, I want you to know. So just to read a little bit here from the meeting here, this might inspire us or give us some ideas. Citizens attending the first town meeting voted a three-dollar bounty for each wolf killed within the township. So maybe Clerk Wright, we can talk about that, the spongy moth committee. We also, and I'll finish with this, the supervisor, Peter D. Makler, was paid fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
A week or a year?
A year. So, nothing wrong with that.
Nothing wrong with that. That's probably the next board meeting.
14.25?
Deflation.
They calculate that.
You need an HP 1200 for that. Anyhow, that's, those are my comments here, and we'll move on.
Thank you, trustee Charles. Trustee Shapiro?
No comment.
Trustee Wagner?
No comments.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No comment.
Clerk Wright?
No comment.
Trustee Colvin?
Nothing yet this time.
Okay. Item 18, open session. To meet an open session, to entertain a motion, and take a roll call vote regarding a closed session for the purpose of considering, to consider disclose, disclosure contained in the township attorney, written opinion letters exempt under MCL 15.268H and MCL 15.243G as attorney-client privilege, and to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to MCL 14.268A at the request of a named individual who has requested a closed hearing.
Second.
Do you have some people you want to add to the closed?
Excuse me?
Do you want to have these two in the closed and the others?
Oh, 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 let me read that out again. We have to have the deputy supervisor, Smith, attorney, Ellis, recording secretary, McCullough, and that's it.
Township engineer, Jim Sharp, if he-
Oh, township engineer, Jim Sharp, if he happens to come up to the building. Okay, thank you.
I'll be stuck in there.
Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Shapiro.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that say nay can stay.
923, Susan?